This meeting is being recorded. This is the property subcommittee meeting, welcome. October 23rd, 2019, 6:15 PM. We have several items on the agenda tonight, just so there's a heads up for everybody. The Dog Park will not be first on the agenda. We'll be discussing the Ferry Street easements and the, uh, actually, Counselor Connick?
That's very sad, but I'll persevere.
We have our attorney with us and we'd like to get him through the meeting as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
So, the first item is to discuss anything that isn't on our agenda to allow for any public speak. If there's anything that isn't on the agenda as any of the items. Does anybody have anything? Thank you. I'd like to open up with the Ferry Street project if we might and go over the details. I, it's a very complicated set of easements. I was hoping that Planner Bag would be able to give us the one or two-minute synopsis of the purpose behind the easements and then we could get into any of the details that the attorney or the councilors felt were specifically appropriate to mention. Since I'm sure it's been gone over, we define it to a company.
Yes, I think I probably need like three or four minutes. There's seven easements, but the council has a memo dated October 10th in the package. So, you know, Planning Department is facilitating the process for City Council to authorize the mayor to execute several easements that are necessary for both the private development at One Ferry Street and the public infrastructure projects, so the reconstruction of the roadway. There is draft language for the easements provided and a draft easement map, like a plan. And then I also provided just a general kind of map schematic of the overall project. I would like to use the board in a minute to go over it. But in general, the easements seek to allow elements of the private development to occur on public property and then vice versa. So we have public monies going on the private property. This is very similar to what we did with the back of the mills. They're generally called reciprocal easements, which allow the public dollars to go on the private property and then score its quasi-public. In several areas, you know, the infrastructure grants of the Mass Works funding will be used on private property to serve the public interest. Several of the easements are time-sensitive as they are required to be executed prior to the construction of the work associated with the Mass Works funding. And then other easements are for utility connections and associated maintenance, tree pruning and other, you know, the right to pass, repass, you know, over the bike trail is something that you'll see when I get to the maps. Everything's in draft form, but it was prepared by the city attorney and reviewed by the private developer's attorney. And, you know, the exact language, there could be minor changes to the language after the city council authorizes the mayor, but the authorization is for the mayor to negotiate the final language and execute. What we're looking to do is try to keep these seven easements together as a package and the request was hopefully that the council could take it up formally on November 6th. So if I may use the board for a minute to just go over the easements. So, I have a couple of different maps, but I'll start with this one. So this is the overall project area. What we're doing with the Mass Works funding is the intersection at, this is Pleasant Street that comes in here and meets Ferry Street and then Love Field. This is going to be a roundabout. The rail trail crossing will be upgraded and there'll be parallel public parking along Ferry Street, a 10-foot wide multi-use path, and then a railing. And right now, the railing spec is the same railings that we have out here in Ash Pond. And then the Mass Works, so that's Mass Works funded, that's the public road project. And what the other component that will be funded through Mass Works is a retaining wall will be reconstructed inside the One Ferry Street property to provide additional parking. And one of the things the easements will do was, will be to make this quasi-public parking interior of the property because we're using the public funds. So in order to make this happen, we need the easements in place prior to construction. There is a, the canal runs through the property and the project has been bifurcated into two parts, the west side of the canal, which is really the thing that we're focused on every day, kind of working on getting going. And then there's east of the canal. And this has, this has shifted in terms of a timeline out a little bit, but while we're doing the easements, we want to have the easement in place while we're packaging them together. This side will become an entrance and this will be parking with a series of retaining walls. And this is where there's a proposed bike path connection along the top of the retaining wall, which will switch back and connect to the rail trail. So again, that has shifted out of ways in terms of a timeline, but it's still part of the overall project. So then just by way, I don't know where I am with my four minutes, but the roundabout has a series of pedestrian crossings on Pleasant Street on Love Field. The rail trail includes this change in direction, it's called the chicane, and it's really best practices for rail trails. So you're riding along and you shift your orientation and it makes you aware that there's an intersection coming. And then this is a very upgraded crossing for the rail trail with a rapid flashing beacons and a protective crosswalk, so that happens on both sides. And then with the Mass Works funding on Love Field, there's about 15 parking spaces that are going to get carved off on the side, which you could park, you could use stairs to go into the private development area, or you could walk the sidewalk and hop on the rail trail. So we've added some public parking there. Then as you go down Ferry Street, we have a new crosswalk. This is the entrance to Millside Park, which is, if you really look at it, it's a sort of a big just sea of pavement, very open. It's not delineated anyway, so that will get defined with a crosswalk installed. And then you're traversing down along Lower Mill Pond and this is where we get a lot of the public amenities. So this will be a 10-to-wide multi-use path with a railing. There'll be, this first section will be benches and landscaping, similar to what we have out here. And then there's a crosswalk that would have a bump out and then basically provide the pedestrian access into the private development here. And then at the end, where the bridge is for the canal is the end of the project for this phase, then there's a crosswalk that would give secondary access into Ferry Street. So the way the easements work is it really is intended to cover that activity. There are seven, so starting with easement area number one, it runs along the north side of the rail trail, which is largely sort of wooded, and this easement is generally intended for access so that they could bring equipment through, cross the rail trail, and do some general maintenance or there. Easement number two.
They've been, you know...
Correct. The pink easements are city property that we're giving access rights to the developer to do certain things. These are temporary. And then the second easement area is on the rail trail looking into One Ferry, there's some slopes. So the developer wants to prune and maintain the trees and shrubs in there, possibly install a fence, and so this easement would allow that type of activity to happen. Easement area number three is, this is city property that the public dollars are being invested to create a row of parking and a retaining wall. So this is an easement to allow the construction and then the subsequent use of the parking after. Easement number four is sort of closest to the rail trail, it's closest to Ferry Street. There's a series of utilities that are going to get run underground, and so this is largely utility easement. Easement area number four corresponds with the row of parking that's going to get installed and the stairway that crosses over. So it's allowing, again, the construction and then the subsequent use of the staircase. Area number six is the east side of the project, and this is permission to use the public dollars on the private parcel to build the retaining wall, the parking, and the bike path extension. So that, that easement's for construction and then permanent use of the parking area after that. And then finally is this easement area number seven, which is the same idea, which is, the ownership pattern out here is layered. So Ferry Street is owned by the city and then there is, this represents a property line where this property goes along with One Ferry. So technically, this is all private property. So we need the easement to allow the construction and then the use of the parking here. So that is the general summary of how this, how this would work. And Attorney Tanner is here to ask or answer any, answer any technical questions.
I just had a couple of quick questions to really get into the specifics. You said quasi-public parking. Can you, or maybe we should direct it to Attorney Tanner, I'm not sure what quasi-public parking kind of means.
I think that's Jeff's...
It seemed a little quasi to me when we talked about behind the mill, and I didn't quite understand the term.
Right, I think that's Jeff's made-up legal term.
I think the intent is, is that it's parking that'll be available for use by the public at large as well as by people who are visiting the private property, and so there'd be joint use, it wouldn't be exclusive to either, and it would facilitate access to the bike path and the other amenities that are public.
How many parking spaces are we talking about on the site?
Um, great question.
I'm just trying to understand how many quasi-parking spaces. I mean, let's say somebody has a wedding venue, I don't know what exactly what the eventual uses are going to be, but if there's some commercial and you have a big celebration and 200 people show up and they drive 100 cars or something, will parking still be allowed for the public here?
Right, and I think that there is some language in there that, you know, the private owner can have reasonable regulations for the parking areas or at least that...
Right, and so in the other, with the other mills that have been redeveloped to town, they have that sort of a language that basically allows the building owner to present someone for, say, parking an RV there for a month or something, putting a two-hour limit on how long they can park there, those sorts of things, just to ensure that the use is reasonable. But what we've done in the language that we're proposing is try to, to, we're on TV, so to broaden our rights over what we gave and the other easements that the city is previously given, these easements are a little more favorable to us than those easements are.
That's good to hear.
So if I wanted to park my car in one of these areas and then pull my bike off the back of my car and bike in North Hampton for a little bit and come back, that would, that'd be, okay.
So how is it treated in terms of enforcement? Because I think we went through this when Insta first opened and kind of a debate around who had domain over the parking behind the mills, whether it was the mill owners or the city, and you kind of got into this. So, I mean, who enforces back there?
Well, so, so the way that they're drafted now, it would be the owner of the private development, right? But once again, the rules that they would have would have to be reasonable. So if they said you can only park there for 10 minutes, then we'd be having a discussion with them as to whether that was reasonable or whether that was a violation of their easement rights.
Because certainly I could see somebody using parking spaces there and going away for four or six hours. I mean, if you go over to take the bike path to Belcher Town, the average person can probably do it. I mean, I can't do it and make a round trip in probably less than four hours with some time spent at a location.
Right, and so, so normally when you're talking about reasonableness in terms of easements and the use of someone else's property, it's how the public at large or a reasonable person would use whatever that use was. And so, for example, if the average time for someone to go take a bike ride is five hours, then you would define reasonable, reasonableness in light of that use. And so if they said, well, you couldn't wait park here for 30 minutes, I think the city's position would be that's not a reasonable regulation.
I think the key element of sharing the parking is that it is, I would say it's reasonable to restrict overnight parking for public use. So that's where the sharing of use, the sharing of parking on this site, really the highest demand is going to be for overnight parking for residential tenants. So that would be a reasonable, you know, expectation that you would have no public parking overnight. And that would be probably something that we'd have to talk through, but that would be where I know that the private developer wants to have access to parking overnight for the residential tenants, and those are the ones who typically park overnight. So this map is not the one that has the parking numbers articulated, but I'd say this is 10, another 10, and about 15 or 20. So this is really the bulk of parking spaces that would be largely shared. Over here, it's going to be a bank of about 20, but then we'll have much more what you would perceive as public parking up on Love Field, so those will be unrestricted.
Jeff, what do you think about the, when you have your outdoor events there, the concerts and stuff, how would that affect this parking?
That's a good question. I mean, I think I look to the attorney and wonder if we should put in, if we need to put in specific language that...
We have it in your draft.
Or city, should we, did I slip that in?
For city, for special events associated with the city of East Hampton. You're better than you know, Jeff.
So, so this is really a moving dialogue that we're having with the developer and it's gone through about 48 permutations, and I'm sure that it will change to some degree before we get to a final easement, and that's the way these things just generally look. What we're looking for from the council at least on the first level is just to let you know what's going on and get your approval to allow the mayor to really negotiate the final easement, knowing that this is more or less what it's going to be.
I think it would be time that there's anyone in the public that has input into what they think should be there would be appropriate for the public to, to have their voices be heard. I would just like to cross out the possibility, would a special event be a snow emergency? We have tight streets on, uh, grant, all the streets across from the mill, Mill 180. If there was requirements to plow the streets, would that be an option? Just something to think about. I will entertain Counselor's input at this point.
I just wanted to ask, Jeff, in this plan, are there parking spaces for the tenants that are not public?
Yes.
Like they will have parking?
Yes. Starting on the west side.
Yep.
So everything west, left of the canal, the building in the back has 20, so there's supposed, my recollection, don't quote me on the exact number of units, 24, 24 residential units, 24 underground parking spaces. And then a larger building that runs along the canal is, I think, still variable in terms of how the developer will build those units out, but it's up to 84 units. And then there's some number of underground parking spaces there along the lines of like 60.
Okay.
And I think the expectation is that not every unit will necessarily get a space, nor will they need a space.
Okay, yeah, because I was just concerned about if they get to park overnight, then that would almost be like their spot then, but it sounds like they're going to have a separate spot and they may also use these other spots.
Yeah, the planning board discussed that quite a bit in terms of how that would work, and then it was ultimately understood to be a parking management, you know, strategy of the owner, how they're going to work that out. You know, we have, now we have these sort of parking areas on the outskirts that everyone wants to share, but we're having discussions about the other things.
Counselor's Eric?
Uh, it's Planner Bag, you mentioned a couple of things. One is that there's, some of these easements are temporary, you said?
Yes.
So, do you, do you happen to have a map at all with an overlay of the, the traffic patterns upgrade in terms of where that may fall in terms of the easements that were granted?
Could you perhaps, could you say that either again or another way?
So you're going to build a roundabout, right? And you're, and you're, and you're discussing easements that may abut or overlay that roundabout potentially, or do they? I guess that's my question.
Right, the roundabout and the bulk of Ferry Street fall within the city's right-of-way, street right-of-way, so it's not as if we're prevented from doing the work or, or action, activities there. That roundabout that's on that image is entirely within the city right-of-way, so we don't need easements to do that destruction, if that was what you...
That's what I was asking. And then the multi-use path, is that, that's an easement that they're granting to us on private property?
Correct, and that would be permanent.
And, I mean, this is kind of splitting hairs, but since we just, we just redid or amended our ordinance governing our, basically our only multi-use path, Manhattan rail trail, do you know how, I mean, it's, it's 100 yards it looks like basically, but do we know how the use of traffic there will be governed or it will be up to the private property owner?
I could probably address that. So if you have an easement, if you're the easement holder, you're called the dominant estate, which means you have the right to control what happens on the easement. The person who actually owns the property can also use the easement as long as it doesn't infringe on your rights as the dominant estate. So I would say that whatever regulations the city has in place with regard to the use of bike trails or rail trails in general would apply to that as well.
Okay. But would, um, would a situation potentially arise where the bike path might get shut down for a limited amount of time while they're using that easement for access?
So there's, I think you'll see a couple X's there in that provision. And our intent is to put a pretty short limitation if that eventuality was to happen, that that would happen. So they can't say shut it down for an hour, it would have to be a matter of 10 minutes or something.
And there, so there's, it's twofold. So there's the area of the bike path that sweeps along and over past the property, and so those temporary easements do allow the potential for there to be construction vehicles or crossing and maintenance, and that is subject to no long-duration closures.
Right.
And then where the crossing is on Ferry Street, there is a plan in place to build a temporary path to keep, then that'll get constructed before they start construction or removing any element of the existing path. So the idea, and that was directed all along, was that the Manhattan state, the trail stays open through the duration of construction, and it's really important where you have the crossing going over Ferry Street. So there's a plan that will show a temporary path in place and then the construction will start to reconfigure everything.
And then that construction would eventually become permanent on the north side of the property?
Right.
Where it connects to the bike path, is that what you pointed to us?
On the right side, on the...
Oh, on the right side.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and that would be the path that would be used temporarily and then become permanent.
So initially, we were talking about this, there's a temporary easement up here along the path, and it's for potential maintenance of the slope and any other activities of vehicles that need to traverse up here, subject to very limited closures. Down here on Ferry Street, there's a temporary path that will be made available before construction on the actual path starts. And then maybe, I think this is where you're hardworking on, so this is the, it's still proposed and it's still future, but this is a bike path connection that then traverses, this is city property here, where there's a switchback to meet ADA requirements to go up the hill, and then that would fence, that would be permanent once that's...
Once that's constructed. The temporary would not be along Ferry Street to that new path, but it would just be a small path along Love Field, between Love Field and the property. Okay, good, that clarifies for me. I don't have any further questions. Very patient gentleman on the end. If you could please identify yourself, state your address and your question.
My name's Eric, 255 Street, East Hampton. I know that I pay a lot of taxes for asphalt, and I know that, like, who, who's going to absorb the tax burden on this quasi-public parking? Is it going to go to the...
Depends. So if it's actual property owner, so if it's the city's property, obviously there's no tax on it. If it's the private property owner, then they would still pay tax on it even though we have the right to use it as the city.
So, so it wouldn't really change, like, like the tax structure isn't changing as a result of the easements?
Correct.
But shouldn't, I mean, shouldn't the landowner be taxed rather than the town? It seems like the town has given up both land. It seems like the town's almost given up everything and losing tax dollars, you know?
And so, I, no, I don't, I don't think so. So there's, there's, both parties are receiving benefits on some level from this. The city's gaining the use of some private property, and it's opening up some, some private property that otherwise wouldn't be accessible. And then the developer is gaining easement rights that it needs basically to build its project. So it's sort of a give-and-take on both sides.
Bike can park there overnight.
It's reasonable regulation, whatever that is. So if they said, if, if the mill owner said no parking overnight and everyone in East Hampton came and said that's unreasonable, then I'm sure the city would take the position that that was an unreasonable regulation.
Well, it seems unreasonable for...
Right, but all of our public parking regulations say that you can't park overnight. So it's, it's in line with our existing public parking regulations to not have the public parking, public facilities overnight, so that's, that's where that's derived from, but...
Well, just to reiterate...
Whereas on private property, they can park overnight, and that's fully the intent of private parking, actually.
Just, just to make sure I understand, it's like, so we're talking about easement areas six or seven, right? Those are areas where the, the public will be granted some reasonable use, but yet they remain the property of the, they remain, you know, the property of the, of the develop, or of the, the development, right?
Exactly.
And so the, the owner of the development will continue to pay taxes on that property despite the fact that the public has an easement to use it.
That's right, I guess in theory, they could, they could go to the assessor and seek an abatement of their taxes because the city has some rights and go through that process. I don't know what the, what they would do if someone sought an abatement, but yes, they are still the owner of that property and would be the ones taxed.
Okay.
Identify, please.
Jim or James or whoever, Ramsey, Campbell Drive. When you said that the city is going to pay for that part of that project, and, but it's their property, it's their land, is that, 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 their parking, that easement area that we would do that, or...
Right, you're talking about the page right, the far side where the bike path is, yeah?
That's, we're paying, we're using town money to repair somebody else's project, right?
Yep.
That's what I thought I heard.
Well, initially, the, you know, the proposal is a grant-funded infrastructure project, and the nature of the Mass Works program is to fund projects that are the last step necessary for a development to proceed. And so what, what I think is important to look at, especially on the page right, where we've been, where we've been talking about the future bike path. The bike path is an amenity that the city gets because the developer needs a retaining wall built to actuate all the parking that he needs, and so...
We're doing the retaining wall.
The, right, yes.
We're paying for that.
We're paying for it as a, in partnership with the project to make sure that the project happens. That's how the Mass Works funding works, is you're leveraging the state dollars to activate the private development.
So that's coming from the Mass Works money, though. Right, so just explain the source of funding for that to have, Jeff.
Yeah, so there's, it's not the general fund first. The, the first pot of money is three and a half million dollars from Mass Works, and then there is a secondary tool that was enacted by the city council and is called the District Improvement Financing, so it's DIF. And so the way that a DIF works is that the new tax revenue that all those housing units generates creates new tax revenue, and the DIF allows the city to take some portion of that tax revenue and pay for public infrastructure. Right, so I think that's where we get back to the idea that that row of parking is going to be publicly available and that the bike path is public access, and so that, that's ultimately the connection to cities involved in that site.
I think ultimately, we've had an ice war in the city for 50 years, now everyone...
I think ultimately, we've had an ISO in the city for fifty years, however long the project's been, and it, it's really a blot on, on East Hampton. So, I really, for one, really appreciated the state's participation in helping this development occur through the removal of the ISO and the creation of some quality units in, near downtown, and will provide some additional housing for the city. But, and some of the tax dollars that we'll get from it will be used to be put back into the, the development. I think that, just to kind of rephrase, I hope I'm rephrasing properly, Jeff. Counselor Pete?
When they say that these easements, the, the, the ones that we are giving to the developer are temporary, what's the, sort of, is it a fixed amount of time, or is it up until the point where the work is completed, or what's the actual trigger that they, that caused them to cease to exist?
Yes, I think there are still X's in, in that area right now, too. Generally speaking, when you grant a temporary easement like that, it's for the duration of construction or until that phase of the construction is done. And because this is sort of a moving target that we're working on with the developer, as of today, we can't put an exact date in it, but once we sort of know what their plan for development is a little bit better, we'll be able to put some sort of time point in that. Just knowing that it's not gonna be forever.
I did have a question about something I heard, and I hope I was mistaken. When you were describing the easement in back along here, you had talked about the developer or having the right to build a fence, and I hope that was a contemporary construction eas, construction fence or something, not a permanent fence on public land, is it? Did I understand that correctly?
There are elements of, of it which are temporary, so there are maintenance, I have projects, pruning of trees, there's a lot of dead trees that hasn't been touched in twenty years. There has been discussion of some kind of fence, and there is a, there's a dilapidated falling-down chain link fence that exists in that tree line today, and I think the scenario that we are envisioning is that it's on public property, and if the private developer is willing to pay for the resurrection of a new fence, then we want to allow that to happen.
Okay, do you, it would be in the plans placed in a location by mutual agreement, I would presume?
Yeah, I think a lot of that area...
Could we have language in that, then there to that effect? You haven't already covered that.
Yeah, so that is easement area...
And you may have.
Right, so Jeff can... I think we should take that into consideration, I think that that's, that makes sense, whether it needs to be, I don't know, I defer to the attorney whether it needs to be in the language.
Yeah, so normally, when the developer goes through the permitting process, that fence would be shown on whatever plan that they submit that gets approved, and then that would become part of everything?
What type of fence, the height of the fence?
I'm not sure if they've done that yet or not, Jeff.
They have now. So at some point in the future, I'm assuming the planning board would have some control over it.
As long as the public would have some control over that, what goes there, that satisfies my perspective. Okay.
Well, as a corollary to that, so Jeff, you mentioned pruning, you just mean temporary removal of trees and such for the purpose of construction, not ongoing maintenance of that section of the easement along the bike path?
I mean, if they're...
Well, I know that, I can clarify at the extent of... Yeah, generally speaking, it'd be a permanent easement to prune trees and do that sort of thing, which is actually to the city.
No, that's what I'm asking. And then, and then, and then to piggyback off of Counselor Kozinski's question about the fence, so I think that's great, they're replacing or improving a, a structure that's dilapidated, falling apart, that's already in the, in the public way, they're bordering the, the bike path back there, but if they, if they put in that, that piece of construction, are they then responsible for maintaining it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Any thoughts about the easement among the councilors?
I mean, I fundamentally think it's reasonable, it's obviously a big complicated project, there's gonna have to be some get or take. I don't see us giving up anything that is really in the public interest, and I see us getting a couple things that are in the public interest, so...
I would agree.
I, I don't, like, I mean, provided that it stays roughly within the parameters of what's being discussed here, I don't see any, any issues.
I'm just happy that I get to add the word chicane to my vocabulary. No, but I don't have any issues, I mean, I think it makes sense in regards to, to a collaborative approach to this project, and making sure that there's a good partnership between the city and the developers, so I would just...
I take it there would, there was no motion language that I saw attached in your presentation, Jeff? Just had a quick question for the attorney while you're here. Presumably, from the mayor's perspective, the mayor would like full authorization to be able to move forward, to make whatever decisions and enter into whatever agreements, and we could craft language like that. Has, is there provisions in any way, I don't feel the need in this case to have the mayor come back to us with the proposed agreement that may be negotiated, but is there room for that within the council's authority, in your opinion? So, and as a, as a question in general?
So, yes, in general, I think you could do that. I think the issue here is trying to meet certain timelines that are in place from the people who are actually gonna work on the ground, who need the easements in order to be in construction. And we're up against the wall where the guys doing asphalt and those sorts of things are no longer gonna be able to do it pretty shortly.
Okay.
So, they're, they're telling Jeff, I think, that they need to start work pretty, pretty quickly.
I, I don't, I don't see in this case, I was asking a general question.
Sure, because it's the granting of a property right that the city owns, and so ultimately the council is the one who controls that.
Right, so we could request that, that be run by us again?
Sure, absolutely, yes.
Just so our councilors can understand, I don't, does anyone feel differently about, about that?
No, I mean, I think given the timeline and everything that's going on, I'm comfortable just authorizing the easements, but I do think that that's a valuable question in future cases where the, what I feel about it might really vary depending on what exactly gets negotiated.
Right.
But for this particular case, it seems like a pretty good deal for us.
I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute some of the easement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes three to zero, excellent. The next subject was the Ferry Street entering into an option-to-purchase agreement on a...
Everett.
I'm sorry, Everett Street, sorry. An option-to-purchase agreement for, how many acres of land, Mr. Wallick?
Seven and a quarter.
Seven and a quarter acres of land. The option would, I believe, run for a year, and give the city time to do several explorations on the property, which would be a benefit to the city and, I would presume, to the landowner in the future. You'll know what you have, and what any environmental impact you might be your issue to. Jeff, would you take it from there?
Sure, so, the current property owner of 109 Everett Street, in a very friendly manner, you know, had, he and I had some discussions about his property and the potential for him to, to sell it. And meanwhile, the city has identified housing as an important issue to pursue aggressively, not only the study of our housing needs, but the production of more housing. I think we have an existing housing production plan, which tells us we need more affordable housing. We have a strong housing market, anecdotally, which suggests we have a housing shortage, which is driving up prices. So a property owner approaching the planning department with a, with a, what appeared to be a, a developable parcel and some willingness to give us time to, to explore the property was something that I, I jumped at in consultation with the mayor. I have said it a couple of different ways, a couple of different times, that our, as a municipality, our, our worst quality is that we're slow. We are slow to move on certain projects, and that's not a criticism, it's just a reality. And so, kind of, seeing a property go on the market, it's too late, though there's never a chance we'll catch up to that opportunity to, to try to acquire it, cobble together the funds necessary, or do diligence, and things like that. So, the property owner is here, and I'm happy to turn it over to Mr. Wallick at any point, but the idea here is that we could potentially enter into an option agreement, which would give the city one year to do due diligence and look at this property and find out if it's suitable for housing development. And the owner has been gracious to talk about giving us a year, which is, even in and of itself, is fast, it's gonna be fast for us. But the structure of the option agreement would be very conservative in that we've laid out probably six items of due diligence that, in some progression, make a lot of sense to explore a property. And, at, at intervals, if we find something that, you know, shows us that it's not gonna be suitable for a larger number of units, then whatever due diligence we've completed to that point, we would provide to the property owner. And that's the value that we're trying to add to the property owner, to give us time to explore the property. So the types of things that we would be potentially looking at are doing an appraisal, which is a very customary early step in any land acquisition process. Sooner rather than later, we would be doing a wetland delineation to, to determine the resource areas that are adjacent with the parcel, and make sure we understand what kind of resource areas are there, and setbacks that are part of that. And then, early on, is some soil testing, just to understand the nature of the property. If you do develop a property for housing, the, one of the key things is drainage, so to make sure that you have soils that are suitable for, for providing drainage. If, at any interval, you know, there's something that is really a deterrent that will provide the due diligence product. If things continue to progress over the winter and then early spring, we would be doing a formal, a more formal feasibility study to really understand the potential for the property to have, you know, a certain number of dwelling units on it. And then towards the end would be a property survey, which would be, you know, that's one of the most expensive things that you would endeavor to do. You know, the understanding is that the property owner would, would derive some value from these products if we can, if we can pull together the funding or make it happen, so... Similar to what we just discussed in terms of the language, the option agreement is something where the city councils, on my understood role of the city council is to authorize the mayor to finalize the negotiation and execute the option agreement. So that's the, that's the real ask, is that the council authorize the mayor to do this. I don't know if this has been done in the city before, but we think it's a, the right time to try to pursue, you know, our own exploration. We don't necessarily wanna just wait around for people to come to us and say, "Hey, we've got a project," because that may take too long. So that's really a proactive attempt to explore property funds. The planning department has some unrestricted funds that are derived from community development block grant, so we have been very successful in the past twenty years with community development block grant, and the process is such that every year that we get those grants, it's elaborate and it's audited through the federal government, but if there are funds left over, they get shifted over into a non-program account, and we have funds available. And my, my approach, since this job has started, is to try to leverage small amounts of money towards something bigger, whether it's a bigger grant or a bigger project. So, the investment of, you know, some pretty small amount of money to, in increments, explore this property, it, it may not work out, but it's not, we're not trying, and we could have a potential housing development at the end of this, and, and we will not know if we don't try. That's really kind of the...
So, just to explain option agreements, to those who may not understand option agreements, it is indeed the city's, you're, we're being asked to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement to have the right to purchase the property at some point in the future.
Right.
And have a year's time to exercise that right. It is not, we're not authorizing purchase per se, we're authorizing the right to do the exploration and expend the funds, well, the city would then expend the funds based upon our giving the mayor permission to, to go ahead. So, there, just wanted to clear, create that delineation between option and actual purchase. Counselor Pete?
I think this is really cool. I have a couple questions. Would the option agreement itself carry a cost to it beyond the cost of the appraisal and survey and whatnot?
So, so the short answer to that is no. So, in most option agreements, you would have to pay money to get the option, because an option is a property right. Here, the consideration that the city would be paying would be doing this due diligence.
Okay.
So if it doesn't go through for some reason, there's some value to the property owner in having, for example, the wetlands delineated.
Yeah, okay, great. My second question, and is, I guess, fine if you don't have a really developed answer, but I know there's some curiosity about this, is what, so say that this property ends up being awesome, and we decide that it's, you know, it's perfect for the development of forty new units of housing, what, what do you envision as the city's ongoing role? Is this gonna be, that, that we purchase the land and then work with a developer to take it over, is that we continue to own the land and get a developer to develop housing on it? Is this something that like the housing authority runs? Like, what, what would be like the city's role after purchasing the property?
I think there are a couple different ways it could be approached. And we, maybe it's too sound, oh, yeah. So we do have the chair of the housing partnership, who may be able to correct me, and I can be easily corrected, but I think one of the approaches that has been discussed is if, if things continue to move forward and we acquire the property, then the, I think one of the potential things we wanna do is offer the property to the, to a housing developer who would develop, I mean, so there's a whole subsequent set of stages where we're jumping way ahead. But if we were to acquire the property for housing purposes, we would be talking about a request for proposals for a certain type of housing development to be developed on the property. And then where we could excel is by offering the property at a low cost, and that would offset that cost for the developer, and that would, that would hopefully be something to entice a housing developer to look at the property. So we would be able to offer a develop, a developable piece of land under our control to a housing developer.
Okay.
Right, so I think that's the...
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's one of the scenarios that we would play out, and I defer to others, I mean, there's a couple, a couple different ways to approach that, and that would be one of the ideal scenarios, to cut out the acquisition cost for the developer.
One question from Attorney Tanner. I was correct in this is an option and not an agreement.
Correct, correct, so to the point you made in the first part of this here, where you said, "Would she have to come back here, or could you make her come back here?" In this instance, they would have to come back here.
Okay.
So, so just to clarify, just so I can understand everything you said, so we have to authorize this option, and then if authorized, you would undergo some sort of exploratory process using grant money, and then if you determined to go forward with a purchase, then you'd come back, we would come back and discuss it again and vote on that, correct? And then once voted on, then it becomes essentially city property, and then we would have to, then... And then, we would have to, then, if we determined we were gonna develop that same property, we'd then vote an RFP, we'd put in RFP for that. So, there's probably three, three separate stages to this. I understand, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Due diligence, acquisition, and then development or disposal of the property for, for development purposes, yeah.
All right. From what I see, I think it certainly makes sense to move forward with the due diligence. There is an expenditure of funds. They, they are funds from CD, BG, grant funds. But, I still see that as we're moving in the direction of having something happen. It's not like we're entering into this willy-nilly, "Oh yeah, let's take a look at it." This is something serious, we will be taking a serious look. It's likely that we're going to do it. The point of coming back to the council is, how does the structure get put together with council authority behind it? Is it how many affordable units, what type of affordable units? Is there market units involved? All of those questions come in at a later point. But, we're here to look at that. Does anyone else have any comments on the request to authorize the option? The mayor to exit, to enter into an option to purchase agreement?
Hi, I'm Janet Tetrow of 52 Pomeroy Street. I'm the chair of the housing partnership. So, my only comment is that this is very, very exciting. And that these opportunities, as Jeff mentioned, really don't come up very often. And so, I think, you know, it's, it's fantastic that the property owner approached the city. You know, it's very surprising and exciting. And the housing partnership is really, you know, looking forward to moving forward and, you know, learning more about the partnership.
Thank you. With no further comment, I'll let me take a motion to authorize the mayor to proceed on the option to purchase. Any further discussion?
I, I mean, I just wanna echo what Counselor Pete said. I mean, we're, we are in severe need of a floor of housing in the city, both for low-income individuals and seniors. And I think this offers us a great opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you for, I hope it works out for all of us.
Well, I think I'd compliment the, the existing housing next door. Pretty nice, you're close to the same bus route and everything else.
Yeah.
Yes, great. With no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes, no no's, no extensions, motion passes. Thank you.
Unless you need me for something else.
No, we're good.
Get outta here.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hustle, hustle.
If you weren't here, I would have... I mean, have a housing right across the street.
Yeah, we do.
Great location.
Yeah, thank you for...
Okay. Do you want to... Uh, I don't believe that...
We need a two-minute recess, or shall we continue? Anyone feel a need for a recess?
I'm good.
Nope, we're all good. All right, then let's, uh, let's move on. I appreciate the attention to the other matters for those who have waited patiently. I think the attorney charge is over at least $250 an hour.
So, we need to get him out of the room. That's why you're going to... As I was saying, you're very expedient, Counselor Krasinski. How are you impressed with that?
Not bad, we projected seven.
That's where action's going, sir. So, thank you very much. If the wish, issue before us, let me just give a basic frame. Is the, there's an opportunity with funds, private funds, to develop a dog park in the city. If the ci, the city does certain things, one of the things is to identify sites. We've kind of taken a pretty broad stroke and asked a contractor to give us a review of several sites. This opportunity is the first blush, the first look really at those plans. I see another meeting in the future, which we'll discuss. It'll most likely be either the second or third week in November. And I really see deep discussion at that time for all the parties and for the, the public to really have an input. And I do see it being further whittled down at that point. Not at the meeting, at the meeting in November, but at a subsequent meeting, given all the input we've received in the November meetings. So, I see a November meetings and then maybe in, in early December, the subcommittee will meet and then the council will likely meet again, either late in the year or the first part of next year, for final decisions. So, Jeff?
I'm gonna pass those out. This'll be easy because I'm Jeff Bag, but this is Jeff Squire. So, we have three Jeffs in the room, that's quite a feast. But I thought you did a great introduction, Counselor Krasinski, and I, so I will hand it over to Jeff Squire from Berkshire Design Group, who I think is prepared to kind of walk through the steps taken thus far. And I think as we generally talked about, the, the primary objective of the meeting tonight, well, first is for the counselors to see the work thus far. But then, really set up the, a public forum. So, so the idea all along has been that several sites should be reviewed by the community at large to, to kind of do a facilitated review of them. And the goal overall is to take what is a, a list of nine and get down to preferably one, or one or two, so that we can be closer to having a site that we would then pursue the, the Stanton Grant Foundation funding for. So, with that, I'd hand it over to Jeff.
Sure, great. Thank you. I'll stand up here if that's all right with everybody. So, just for record, Jeff Squire from the Berkshire Design Group for NSK Architects and Sidon here in North Hampton, to look at these sites and sort of develop a matrix for evaluating them for a potential dog park. And so, you know, just quick overview, there's, there's nine sites that we were asked to look at. And what I'll try to do, just in the interest of time and for discussion, is, so what we did is we looked at these nine sites with sort of a review criteria. And, you know, I, I won't read all of these, but they are in packets and feel free to ask me about any of them. But, you know, essentially, it's looking at size, about drainage, vehicle, pedestrian access, adjacency, adjacent uses, whether residential, commercial, just its appropriate and its first location, site infrastructure, and some of the other, you know, items that are listed on there. So, what we tried to do is go through each site, develop a base plan, look at each of these and how they would, you know, apply. And then, again, somewhat subjectively, but we started, you know, with our own, on this one, but we essentially took each site and provided it a number grade from one to four, one being least favorable, one being most favorable. And that was sort of how we went through the process internally in our office, recognizing that, recognizing that some of the, some of the grades that we gave it, you know, were subjective and maybe, you know, others may have another opinion. So, I, what I'll try to do is just run through the sites fairly quickly, highlight the, you know, the major constraints or issues or opportunities that we saw. So, the first site is on Lincoln Ave. Again, Jeff, these are all city-owned properties.
Correct.
So, this one is, you know, is, is bordered by Maine, Parsons, and Federal City. It's a really small site. I think this one was a quick evaluation in that it's surrounded by residential neighborhoods and homes. We, we picked about 150 feet from residential properties as sort of a general guide for, you know, what's too close and, you know, thinking about public access and noise and all of those things. All of that, you know, this entire site is, is within, you know, that, that residential buffer. Access is a little bit challenging, it's really a small site. So, in terms of, you know, overall grades, this wasn't a, you know, a great site on our list. This site, there's actually two sites here, though. So, this is 155 Oliver. This is the large solar, ground-mounted solar array. There's some potential available land to the south. And then, across the street on Oliver, there's another 8.3 acre site that actually has some potential. So, again, going through, you know, some of the, some of the bigger challenges or opportunities that we saw, there's certainly, you know, enough space for these. It is a little bit remote, you know, obviously, I gotta pull up the, the overall map, but, you know, these, these two, this site in particular are, are way out, you know, on the edge of, fringe of town. So, its remoteness isn't ideal for a public park. Access to this site is a little bit more challenging just because of the distance from Oliver Street. But there, you know, there is, there is enough space. There's about five point acres here, there's about eight point three acres here. This site is certainly more favorable of the two. But again, I think the, you know, the remoteness is probably the biggest drawback to, to this site or these sites.
Just a quick question, accessibility to that? Oh, okay.
So, would be, yeah, the idea would be come around, you know, behind the fence line.
Off Oliver, along the fence.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And no, nothing is there now, there isn't road.
Nothing is there now, no. Presumably, I, and I haven't been out to this site specifically. I don't know what they have for access and maintenance, roads out there that, but it would be, yeah.
But the one on the other side of the street there, that's completely wooded, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's no resource areas. It's actually, you know, if this site were more centralized, it's actually not about location. Access is really good, there's, there's plenty of space, topography isn't bad. But again, it's just, it's remoteness is a little challenging.
But all in all, when you look at the size of East Hampton, it's not, I mean, from the center of town, it's not like it's, it's not that far, a couple miles.
And I would argue that remote might be a positive instead of a negative, because you're not in the city. You are remote.
Yep.
Which is good, thus remote.
So, again, some, some of the grades may change. Site, let's see, site four, so this is 154 Holyoke. So, this is at the base of Holyoke Street where Hendrick comes into it. The, the, you know, there are frontages along Holyoke Street and then there's a larger frontage on Hendrick. These two are particularly challenging just because of the adjacent intersections. It actually seems like you could, you could safely get a, an access road in off of Hendrick to the far south of this, you know, this property, this frontage. Again, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of land here. It's, you know, this, this region here is about two acres, but there's certainly potential for other outdoor activities to happen. You know, future, you know, trail connections, conservation area, other, you know, adjacent lands that would, you know, fit well with this. Access, you know, like I said, is, is good, it's not great, but it's, it's certainly, it's certainly, you know, within reason for, for park issues. And again, its central location is, you know, is somewhat ideal and that it's, you know, along the major thoroughfare. So, there is some topographies, some drainage pitches and whatnot that we have to be cognizant of. But I think in general, as a site, it, it represents itself pretty well.
I just wanted to say...
Thanks for including the disc golf.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about the, the...
Oh, yeah.
Maybe it's a little overboard with saying future disc golf, but there is a, a group of people who have approached various people about the idea of disc golf. And I think it's an ongoing conversation that looks, it, it, this analysis kind of lent, lended itself to at least inserting it there. Maybe, maybe we change the wording a little bit, like potential. Would be good.
Other activity, always happens.
There's a discussion about disc golf, it, it involves the parks department as well. You know, there's, there's an exploration of disc golf. I will also say that there are other discussions about a skate park. So, there's a group that have, you know, desire to have a skate park somewhere. But, the concept in general is multiple recreational activities. Some of these sites are, lend itself to that and some do not. So, so I think going forward, we can label that as potential future disc golf. Kind of stop that per se.
And then in regards to this site two, does this, doesn't this, would this a, not a tough in a way that you could probably create access?
Yeah, it's a bridge.
Yeah, right.
So, then, this is...
Yeah, yeah, so this varies, you know, in this upper corner, northwest corner, there is, you know, there is a potential, this is not a park.
Site three.
Yeah.
Four, five, yeah.
Oh, you said the one that touches...
Site, site four touches down a tough car.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Albeit quite distant, the disc golf would be...
Sure.
I mean, once you got...
Here.
Yeah, it's possible, it's possible, yeah.
So, moving on, sites five and six. So, these, these are off Park Street, 226 Park Street is the address here. There's, there's two sites on five and six. Five is, there's a large undeveloped parcel or, or area in the back of the property that's accessible through treehouse circle. Again, going through a lot of the criteria, there's, you know, there's a lot of space. It's, you know, it's, it's unvegetated largely right now. So, you know, from an environmental standpoint and impact perspective, for construction, it's not a major deal. The, the larger issue, I think, is its adjacency and access through, you know, at least to this site, through, you know, residential, established residential neighborhood and then trying to get, you know, people into a park through, you know, through a development is particularly challenging. And not an ideal situation. That, that said, there, there is sufficient space, there, there is an opportunity for, for some other use there. It is, you know, this, this area here is about 9.3 acres. So, it is a sizable site. But again, I think the access, you know, is, is one of the major concerns that we, we presented.
Very much so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm assuming you went out to the site?
We, so these, I went to portions, I haven't been out here, I have driven by.
Do you, do you, do you know that they, that's where, when they dredge the...
Mm-hmm.
And it's like a 10-foot-high pile, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you have not driven down Button Road and actually driven that access?
I haven't driven into this site. I know, I know from, you know, past experience.
One of our concerns is Button Road is narrow.
Yep.
Cars park on it, it's curved, there's a hill, you cannot see cars coming around.
Sure.
And we are very concerned about a lot of, a lot more traffic coming through there, which is already, we've all had close calls on there.
Sure.
So...
Yeah, and I think, you know, as I know, and you'll see our matrix at least, it didn't, this, this site in particular didn't bode well from, from our standpoint, from, from an access standpoint.
Yeah, I had a question. I think you said in the beginning something about wanting to be 150 feet away from residential properties?
That was, it was, this, this pink buffer is 150 feet from residential properties. Again, it was, it was an arbitrary number. It depends really on where you are on topography and vegetation, but we had to pick some distance to be able to at least establish a criteria by which, you know, it seemed too close to residential homes.
Because where I see the bottom line, I see the future potential site is, there's a border of that that is much less than 150 feet from homes.
Yes, yes. Right, right next to some homes.
I'm sorry, that...
I think the pink is the border of...
Right, so this, this is, this is the, this is the border of 150 feet from all the homes on, on Button Wood and Treehouse, yeah. And then, the other, the other portion of this site that...
Did you get your question answered?
I clarified, good.
Okay, good, thank you.
The other potential site on this, this parcel was, was up along Park Street. There's, you know, getting, once you get down behind the homes, there's some, you know, some area back there. Access is a little bit challenging through this narrow right-of-way. Again, not an ideal site. Could you get something in there? Yes, but I think, you know, again, it's, it's probably not ideal from, you know, from the standpoint of access and its adjacency to, to residential homes. But it is, you know, this is about 7.2 acres in total. So, for most of the dog parks, it's somewhere in the two-acre neighborhood. So, there is, there is some space there.
When you say not very wide, it looks as wide as...
Fifty feet.
It's, it's a fifty-foot right-of-way, yeah.
Right-of-way or ownership?
Well, ownership, I mean, that's, that, the property width that this, that this jump is fifty feet.
Probably width is fifty feet.
Right, right.
And, and a driveway or a road for that would be typically how wide?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet, okay.
It's a lot of driveway.
So, that, right, that and that space with the grading and...
So, there's some, some cost associated with, with developing that. And you wouldn't leave it as gravel? Is that not an option?
I don't know that we've determined whether gravel, I think, I don't know for sure, and I would defer to Jeff, whether gravel could be a suitable... I would, I would expect gravel would be a suitable driveway if constructed properly. But, I don't know for sure, we...
I would assume the cost would be far less.
Correct. There would still be drainage that would have to be accounted for even with gravel, but the cost would be less.
Okay. Yeah, maintenance, maintenance is usually the major concern with, with any gravel. Are there questions?
Yeah, I just have a question. I assume you saw the letter from our neighborhood...
Yeah, I just have a question. I assume you saw the letter from our neighborhood. About fifty-four residents of our neighborhood signed a very thoughtful and detailed letter about our concerns. Many people who signed the letter would like to see a dog park in East Hampton, but not at this site.
Understood.
Because of many, many reasons.
Sure.
So I assume you saw that.
Yes. Other questions about either of these two sites?
Do you know actually, I'm sorry, approximately for site.
Site six or site five?
Six is in, so, so it says it right there. For site six, do you know approximately how long the potential, I would use the word driveway, would be that access to corridor?
Feet, so this is probably about 200 feet, just that.
That's not that far, right.
And just, this is 150 feet, you know.
I'm sorry, no, and Jeff was saying that gravel could be a potential thing to explore.
Yes, I understand.
Because it's downhill from Park Street. So there wouldn't be runoff coming into the public way on Park Street.
Right, it would have to be captured and dealt with, you know, somewhere where that circle is at, with the mix of twenty cars, there would be a drainage.
If we did use that site, we wouldn't have to change the name of the street to Dog Park Street.
Oh, God, so darn. Excellent, yes.
So, site number seven, yeah. So this site is at the end of Highland Ave. It's, again, it's, it's a, it's an interesting site, although access is extremely difficult and challenging. The homes down at the end of the road get really close to, you know, what is the, the city right of way, which continues all the way out. Although the real development, the paved portion of the road, I think, ends, you know, somewhere in here. And the topography, you know, from here to the west is really steep. It drops down into a ravine. There's a single family home here, and then this is all relatively steep here. And, you know, I, this is, this is a road that I have driven down because I was unfamiliar with just what at the end, but it's, what's at the end. But it is, you know, quite an encroachment on, you know, some of the homes down at the end, so.
And you're still within noise buffers.
And you're still, well, to get into the site, yes, yes. There's about ten, ten, a little over ten acres that's, you know, outside of any resource areas or noise buffers. It's, but again, it's, you know, it's a fairly short road, and getting access into the site is going to be particularly challenging.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Why would you put the park where you have it when you have all that other land to the right of it?
I, I think this is more diagrammatic, just to show that this is a two acre park size.
Okay.
It could be located anywhere in here. It's really, I think for us, it's really, you know, typically it's trying to shorten the access to the, to the parking area as much as possible. So, you know, you will push that, but there's no reason why it couldn't be somewhere else. It would just increase the length of the access road, that's all.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just note, I've, I walked this parcel recently. I've, I've known one of the people who would be the butters. It's a potentially excellent site for some form of recreation or something like that. But I agree, much like with Button Road, there's challenges in terms of how narrow that is and where you would put parking. If there was a way to figure out how to get access in there some other way, possibly off of Route 10 there or something like that. Or through the, if we can get easily through someone from the industrial park. There's water infrastructure back there. There's already, there's already pathways. I just wanted to put that out. That if we do eventually do site visits, it would be interesting for the public to see what's back there. It's an old Boy Scouts camp, and it's, there's still a flagpole out there and, and bugger spigots and things like that, so.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great site. It just, access is challenging.
Right.
Other questions on this one? And so the last two are both in, both areas of non-attuck park within the existing park boundaries that we looked at. One is again, a really small site right at the entrance. The existing playground is here. The gate, main gate is just up here. Tennis courts, or basketball courts, rather. So this is, this is an area just to the southeast of the existing playground. Idea being that you potentially have, you know, parking off, off the street without having to enter the park, even though this is park property. It's, I think it's, it's adjacency to the playground is a little bit, you know, a little bit of a concern. It's also really small. This is, you know, this is only about one, point one nine acres. So, you know, it's, it really doesn't lend itself very well to, you know, to a, to a dog park. And then I think with this one and the other one, whether it's a, a, a plus or a negative, is that they're both within the non-attuck park boundaries. So they would be subject to all the rules and regulations that, and hours of operation of these for, for the park. So, you know, it wouldn't be, I would see if a dog park were located inside, that it wouldn't be accessible, you know, year round all the time, so.
But you wouldn't want dogs running around and barking at night anyway, so.
Depending on where they, where it is.
But all of the ones you're talking about, or at least some of them, would be within hearing of residences. So, you know, keeping to the hours of the park, I don't know what the hours of the park are, but would that.
Sunset.
Oh, sunset.
Yeah, it is.
But anyway, just a thought, as you said, that that keeps it a while.
The other thing is that the park closes in the winter.
Correct.
Point one nine really isn't that.
Yeah, point one nine, I.
Maybe for a ferret.
But only one.
One at a time.
No grants for that, for those parks yet, right. And then, so the last site that we looked at also, non-attuck park, is adjacent to the other playground. Woodley Fields are here, so there's a deeper in the park.
Just kind of show the entrance to the park in relationship to where you are. I think, I think you're up here.
Up here.
I think you're up here.
Yeah.
Coming in.
Right.
Lounge, lounge is.
Is up here, right, and this is the entrance.
This is the entrance to the park, here, okay. And then it comes up, and then you go to the ball fields typically, or to children's playground, just for reference.
So this isn't all, all the space between the entrance, you know, the, the entrance drive and, and the area behind the parking lot, or the playground, I'm sorry. It's a little over one and a half acres, so, you know, it's getting a little tight, but we could still certainly squeeze something in there. It, you know, there is, there is opportunities to expand the parking. All the, all that infrastructure is there. So in terms of, you know, that, those facilities, it lends itself nicely. I think, you know, again, it's a very treeed site and wooded site, so it would require some clearing. And I think it's just, its location in the park is, is another, you know, major consideration. So whether that's again, good or bad, it's, you know, it's really for the community. And again, just it's adjacency to a playground is, is a little bit of a concern for us. It's, it typically hasn't been an issue in any of the dog parks that we've done. But I know it is a concern that a lot of people bring up, so. Certainly, more than colleagues know that, so, yeah.
I haven't been to any of the dog park meetings. My name's Haley. I'm curious if I go to the North Hampton Community Garden Dog Park, which is more just trails. Went from Florida, so most, most dog parks are just fenced in areas. If they're going to be a barrier of sorts, just thinking about that area, if there's playgrounds. Is it, is the idea that it would be fenced, or is it more of a walking area or dogs are off-leash?
Yeah, so, I mean, Jeff can speak to it, but at least from our experience with the Stanton Foundation and their, and their grant money for, for the dog parks. That's one of their requirements. It's an off-leash dog park that's, you know, it is fenced.
It has a.
There are a couple of requirements, yeah, that they, they require in the park.
Not only are they, are they fenced, but generally they're separated by large dogs and small dogs, separate fences. Coming into a joint fence that enables entry and exit within a fenced area. So that one dog at a time can come in and out, and still go into the next entrance, and not like escape somewhere. That, that's the plan. That's the plan. And it's not, it's not like the trail park in North Hampton.
Yes.
Has its own merits, but that's not what we're.
Would be responsible for maintaining all these, or the parks in general?
I think that's a question still to be answered. It's, it's been handled in many different ways, you know, every means, means value that we've worked with.
What would restrict people from using it at night?
Just the rules and regulations, you know, posted.
I know we don't go parking at night no more.
The dog park probably.
Drinking or anything else like that, you know?
Yeah, I think, I, you know, it, it would, it would be subject to the same, you know, rules and enforcement that, and any of the other.
There would be gated, not, what it could be.
Well, there'd be a gate at the entrance. There's a chain link fence, you know, around, again, they're on the, five foot high. But, you know, for, for somebody who really wants to get in there, they can certainly get in.
Yeah, right, right.
It's, you know, if, if you were going to go find a place to drink, there's probably other places on a big open, you know, field. But to your point, it's, you know, there's, we haven't specified anything that would, you know.
Have you looked at how the property values would be affected by the butters' dog park?
So the research that we've been able to gather isn't, isn't real specific to dog parks. It's more about the, the value of public amenities close to residential homes. So any park, whether it's a dog park, a, a walking park, you know, any type, you know, whether it's a boardwalk. Any adjacency to park space typically increases property value. I recognize that there's a, there's a, you know, a range of parks to be evaluated. But, you know, the, the general research says that, you know, homes that are close to, you know, public recreational opportunities that are well cared for increase property value.
A dog park is different than a playground.
But a lot, but just to that argument.
To go and play, for example.
But at least from our, I mean, again, from our experience, we have seen more noise and concerns from playgrounds than dog parks. Because there are kids yelling in, in the playgrounds typically anytime they're there. The dogs don't often bark.
They don't bark all the time when they're, it's not like everybody's.
It's not like a kennel. You don't, you might get one or two dogs in there that bark if they're just playing. But oftentimes, they're just running around, not making a lot of noise. So it's, again, that's just our experience in the, you know, five or six years that we've been doing these. It's, it's not the.
And what about the increased traffic when you have a limited access?
Yep, so that's all, all of those valid concerns, absolutely, yeah.
Another non-attuck site, both of those sites, specific question. There's an entry fee to get into the park, right? So.
Weekends.
On weekends. So how would that affect? Yeah, I ride my bike, so I've never actually paid to get in, but, or I walk. But for others, that would be a barrier to entry if they wanted to come through this dog park, right?
I think that's all subject to discussion.
Sure, for later, yeah, if that was decided.
But it is, it is a point, I think we would consider.
Oh, I agree, I totally agree about that.
And we're looking at sites, I think, pretty much at least two acres.
Okay.
Which brings me to a point that I wanted to ask about. And that was, there's a site over here that looks like it had about two acres. Didn't interfere with wetlands between the first pavilion and the wetland over here. Is that something that would have over two acres?
Yeah, and I don't, I, my guess would, we didn't look at sort of all the other available land within the park. Because I think there's probably a number of other areas.
I think we're, we're trying to look at something that would be very close to the entrance to the park. So that the issue of going deep into the park during the wintertime wouldn't be something that we'd have to figure out. So, but that, I think that is over two acres.
So, yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd have to look and see what, you know, what's really available.
I didn't know if there was interest on behalf of the other property subcommittee members to consider the possibility of having the two acres we looked at. If, if there is two acres to go through the number crunching, I don't know how long it takes, how difficult it would be. Is it a few hours work, an hour's work?
No, it's, it's, would be an hour or less to be able to at least look at.
And do the kind of rough blush that you've given to the other sites. I would feel good about doing that, and felt that we would have found our due diligence.
I mean, it's, it's whatever, but for me personally, like, the, the challenge I run into on any non-attuck site is the lack of winter accessibility. Just that, that, that's just, that's gonna be, I don't want to say a, a complete deal breaker, but that's gonna be.
So if that, if that, if that could be overcome.
If that can be overcome, then, yeah, sure.
Then it would be worth pursuing. I think the, the cost of overcoming it is widening from one lane plowing to multi-lane plowing.
And you're suggesting that they basically just plow up to that?
Well, no, well, they, they plow beyond that. They plow all the way through the park to the water. To the, the water department plows to gain access to the well on the other side of Non-Attuck Park. And so that's done daily, because they have to check the site.
I've gathered.
But it's too small to, to really go and, and have a dog park with one lane. It would require a second lane. And it may require.
Yeah, I mean, I've gathered from bits, bits and pieces of hearing, different discussions, that there's plowing, but there's also that it's gated, closed at, at the top of daily field. So there's, there's more.
Using the maintenance road.
Right.
There's two people instead of six people work, because they get laid off in the winter.
There's a couple other factors. I think it's just that there are a couple other factors than just plowing that would factor in the going in in the winter. But I, I mean, there's a, there's a, you know, the Parks Commission has voted no proactively to, to having a dog park. So, so when we get to the public discussion there, there's a back and forth. But I think what might position the public forum a little bit better is if Berkshire Design Group can determine that there is a two acre parcel area on the below, south area. If you could determine that there's two acres approximately of potential available, then at least we don't have size as a limiting factor. We have, we, we, we can get size, but we might have to have the discussion about the other potential limiting factor. But maybe that's an exercise. Maybe the lounge ave, one comes off.
Yeah.
Because that's clearly just too small, and if there's a test that you can do that you get size, then at least keeps the discussion going with the other complexities on that.
The other one that might come off is, I don't know if anyone's tied to Lincoln at this point?
I am definitely not.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that was certainly part of the initial consideration, but I think we've reached pretty early on, it's a variety of reasons. It's too small, and understood for other things, but.
Do we have a question?
I just have a comment. I know that there's touting of the Robinson State Park Dog Park. I don't know if you're aware that, that actually was closed during the winter. Once the weather, once there's any kind of ice, they, they closed it down for a good chunk of the winter, so.
Robinson doesn't have a dog park.
That's where the, the dog park is in the Robinson State Park.
That's.
Agawam Dog Park there.
That's Agawam Town Park.
There, well, there's something in Robinson State Park. There's a dog park in there.
Are you talking in Westfield? Is that what you're referencing, Robinson State Park?
Yeah, the, the.
Robinson and Agawam.
Well, okay, so.
I just, I just, I know that East Hampton does not have a dog park.
We, we just did one in Agawam.
Okay, but that one, but that one was closed.
Yes.
It was in the winter.
So, so it's possible to close the dog park in the winter and still have.
Because of conditions.
A Stanton, still have a Stanton.
I think they don't have any requirement. I think what we've heard is people prefer to keep them open as long as they can, provided that the weather is suitable.
Right, right.
And I'd say, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that given any given year, you may have to shut it down for big blocks of time, so.
Often we establish a space that's accessible all year round, especially when we want, when you're more limited. Your dog is more limited to opportunities for exercise in the winters.
Right, but I think they shut it down because it was dangerous for the dog.
Right, and when it's icy. There may be times that there are limited, limited usage.
Also, it's like, you've got like a St. Bernard or something.
Well, I have, I have a NuFie, and I'd hate to see her sliding around, I don't believe me.
Someone who slid a lot on ice last year, yeah, it's painful. My question about non-attuck specifically is, there are a lot of like used trails back there that a lot of people use for dog walking and just for hikes and recreation. And I was just curious how that would impact that, and if it's gonna be a chained off area. What, what type of, are there, are there trees gonna be removed? Like, what is it gonna do to the landscape there?
That's a wooded area.
Yep, yeah.
And that would be a factor. They would have to be clearing on that site.
What we've been doing more commonly on our, our more wooded sites is trying to keep, you know, as much vegetation as we can, just a couple reasons. One is that, you know, as soon as you take it all, all the way, the first people, thing people want to shade, and, you know, shade to put back is not cheap. Especially if you've got a lot of mature trees there. The other is that, you know, trees are, they're definitely a nice amenity to any park. and the challenge with dog parks in particular is any new trees are really subject to, you know, the, the dogs and, and all the impacts that you get, so you really need to, you know, coordinate them off, and it just, it makes it a much more, it's a much bigger proposition to put new trees in a park. So, um, you know, we've, we've, as long as the sightlines and the visibility is there for the, you know, for the large areas, so people can see their dogs, um, you know, we, we'd much prefer to have, you know, a, a, you know, stand of mature trees there with some, with some reasonable clearing, but yeah.
So, I think we have consensus to remove lounges, to move Lincoln, and to explore at least very briefly the possibility of the space across the street.
Make the, can you make that, what do you?
No, no, I don't think we need a motion on that formally unless you, no, I mean, we're not recommending anything to council.
Right, we're just, in terms of informal discussion, I agree that there's, for a variety of reasons, they're just not optimal for that.
Right. And the other projects can be further evaluated. We were looking at mid-November. How about your schedules?
Um, you, you mean for a meeting?
Yeah, for a meeting, the week of the eighteenth, perhaps.
Um, that should be fine, okay. Let me see, probably.
Do you think we can get sufficient exposure to the public on this that would draw out anyone who would really be interested?
Well, we, yeah, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
I, I just like it when everybody kinda knows what's going on, and people can have a chance to have input now rather than later.
So.
When it shows up under the front door.
Yeah.
Oh, it's big done.
Jim, how many members are on the Dog Park group now? Like, two fifty or something like that, you think?
Yeah, well, nobody's, I mean, there's very few that are answering the questions, so I.
Right.
It says you have to answer them to join it, so.
But the ones that actually joined.
You have emails and.
So, there's a, there's an East Hampton, there's a, on, on social media, there's a, a friend, a friend of the East Hampton Dog Park group, and that has a fair amount of people now, I think. That have actually.
Two twenty-four.
Yeah, and we could, so that could be expanded and advertised more.
We could ask someone at the Gazette to write something up about it, usually.
Good.
Yeah, so I think, I think you could definitely get exposure.
All right.
So, I'm sorry, so which, you were talking about?
We were talking about, uh, perhaps scheduling, uh.
The week of the twentieth? Oh, sorry, the week of the eighteenth?
At this point, the week of the eighteenth is wide open.
Mm-hmm, we have city council on the twentieth, correct? We have a meeting on the, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
How about, uh, what is the, what is Thanksgiving fall?
Uh, it's the.
Thursday, twenty eighth.
The, the following week after that, the week of the twenty-fifth.
The week of the twenty-fifth is Thanksgiving. All right, good. I wouldn't run into that. The twenty-first?
Oh, which is the Thursday?
Yeah.
Probably. Sorry, I was just, I'm just thinking of the.
I, um, I would also propose maybe Monday, the eighteenth, although I, I have sworn to myself never schedule a public meeting on Monday. It's just a lot of work on that Monday. But that's why we have Berkshire Design Group to, uh, post it. But, um, I, I am aware of, so the city council meets on Wednesday, the twentieth, and I am aware, uh, as of today, of a potential meeting that other people would wanna attend on the nineteenth. So, I don't, I would like to recommend not Tuesday.
Oh, because I was gonna go to the nineteenth. I'm glad you brought that up, okay.
The twenty-first works. Is that, is that twenty-first?
Twenty-first would be great, or, and/or the eighteenth, which is a Monday.
And what about the public that's in this room? 'Cause I know you're all just.
I, I have a work commitment until six on the, on the twenty-first.
We, we wouldn't start before then.
I, it's over an hour, so.
Six thirty?
We'd love to see you there.
I, 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 I'll make sure I get it.
I'm thinking six thirty.
If it's the twenty-first, I'll make sure I'll get it.
On the twenty-first.
I didn't mean to, did you have further?
No, I think, no.
No, I mean, we're concluded, okay.
Nope, this is, that's.
Wanted to check that out. All right, thank you. So, the twenty-first, it seems.
You think six thirty?
Six thirty.
For a venue, I appreciate it.
Well, you've, you've been really invested, and I think obviously everyone else here is, seems really invested.
Jeff's, well, we're trying to try and get the upstairs.
I don't know.
I think, I think if you're willing to keep the venue open for the time being, there could be some options. We had a discussion, there's a couple spaces that would get us out of City Hall, which might be potentially useful.
We can talk about that.
Right, as long as you give flexibility on the venue, I think we can work with the day and the time for sure.
Okay.
Um, one thing I do wanna ask, if I can, of, of Jeff at Berkshire is just, just talking through a format. So, I mean, my, I think what you did tonight was very useful, and I think, although people always wanna just cut right to get in digging in, I think the, the overview is really critical of the, the assessment of each property so far.
I, I see assessment.
Yeah, and then just, and I'm not, I, my expectation is not to figure it out right now, but then to come up with like a facilitated, whether it's small groups, or some way to have the people who are attending to kinda help, um, add the additional ranking of each site and help us. 'Cause again, the goal is to take it from, if we're at, if we're at seven, you know, we wanna try to get to one or two, that, that would be the ideal scenario, that we could then apply some more concerted effort on. Um, so, you know, we could probably talk through how the best, how best to facilitate a public engagement part, but the idea would be a presentation portion with some kind of engagement and ability for the people to, to help kind of prioritize or, or eliminate that kind of thing, right? And that's what we talked about, kind of.
Yeah, no, we have to get, we have to get a, a large group of people to be able to engage in that process, so, yeah. Jeff, this, the link for, for this, this is publicly available, right?
I made it available yesterday, and I think the one thing I do wanna note is that.
I had a problem access.
Oh, you did?
Accessing directly, you know, maybe we can talk about that later. It might be an individual.
There was a potentially slightly revised version of the drawing that I'd like to post after me, but I, I did put this presentation up last night, so now it's.
Is it on the planning Facebook page? Is that where?
No, I did not do anything with Facebook yet. I put it on the planning department page.
Oh, definitely, on the planning.
So, just so it's there.
Okay.
Um, there's, I would say, Jeff, you'd say that there were minor changes just to.
Yep.
The way the, the maps appear.
Legibility of the plans and.
They are currently there, and I'll update it with the revised set.
Do, do you know anything about that?
We can probably get those off tomorrow.
Yeah, so I.
I'll, I'll make sure I share that.
Yeah, I think, I think before you, I mean, there's a whole activity around promoting the event. I'd like to have a day to firm up the venue, so, just quick, so I can have the committees input. So, um, at Old Town Hall, we have the ECA Gallery space, which is relatively small, but it's a more of an open format, which we have access to as long as it's not booked or something, for free. The other venue that we have talked about or used in the past is, um, in Eastworks, there's two. There's the MAP Gallery, which is in the center part of Eastworks, um.
But not through our project, like.
Okay, great, so I need to check the duration.
Well, actually, I wonder if they'd be gone?
At that, I don't know, I'm just, just.
That's how they moved it. But there might be something else in there.
Yeah.
Right, so I wanted, I would say explore that one, because we would potentially have access to that room for free as well. And then, but over by Riffs is that room, but there's a fee associated with that, but, um, it's like a hundred and a hundred dollars to have the room. Um, and then if all else fails, we could just be kind of upstairs.
I would vote not to spend any money, right? We have other sites that make sense. Not to be too financially motivated. But other than that, I guess I would leave an open for your suggestion. If you could consult with us, that would be great.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's a, it's like a scheduling type conversation.
Yep, that we could do, we can, we can still do it.
Firm up a location, okay.
All right, so I think we have a date, November twenty-first, six thirty P M, touch site to be determined. Any other comments on the Dog Park?
Thanks for the work, planning.
Thank you.
Yeah, everyone for showing up, encourage your friends to make these, big decisions in the city, so make sure people come.
We wanna come to a good discussion, whatever, whatever decision is done.
Can I just ask one question? Uh, regardless of the site there, um, and what, what kinda concerns me regardless of where it is, is sort of the nebulous. We've got, we're assuming there's gonna be the design grant and the, um, but there's the piece that I think is missing is the after, that I'm feeling kind of.
I didn't get that word, sorry.
The after piece.
The after piece.
So, so you've got money that is gonna cover the design, you've got money that's gonna cover the implementation, the actual, but there doesn't seem to have been any, um, concrete conversation of maintenance, of liability issues, the law, I mean, the last thing you want is put in something, regardless of if it's a playground or whatever, and then not have any future endowment, any future plan to keep it up, because then it's just gonna deteriorate.
'Cause the rail trail was that way.
Sections of it are, yeah, that need to be.
No, I mean, the rail trail is not, that's a whole, that's, that's not a park project, that's not a, uh.
I'm not talking about.
It's municipally owned, municipally owned, but not municipally maintained.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay.
They don't plow it, they don't salt it, they don't, it's just.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about, I've called this, but we just need, we need to form a friends group, and I've just been a little bit behind with that, so that's, I will make that a priority over the next.
I guess, I guess my concern is, is, my big concern is, yeah, they're, the city owns the rail trail. They don't plow it. You've got friends.
The man in the rail trail.
Right. I, I understand that piece, but you don't have.
A massive amount of work, yes.
A lot of dog poo to deal with.
Yeah, like at Manhattan, some, they have like a volunteer group that takes the, the city.
Right, and that's my concern if the.
My scale's the same way, it's volunteer.
Yeah.
Yeah, Pittsburgh.
What about parking areas and the access roads? You still have to plow those, you have the main, the main.
Yeah, I guess it's the maintenance, maintenance that I have.
Yeah.
Jeff?
You know, I, I appreciate the discussion. It's important, and I, I would actually say, Mr. Zaret, that I don't think that you're behind in forming a friends group. I think we had to take a step back and initiate this, this broader site evaluation to, to take some steps to even know, do we, do, can we even get to one preferred site? And so, we've had the discussions about maintenance and endowment and liability, and I think, you know, the easiest one to tackle is liability, is that there are many other municipalities in Massachusetts that have done the design grant and the construction grant, have, have formed a friends committee and have opened their parks, and the liability is the least of the, there's, once it's city owned, you're, you're, you have a blanket coverage. So, liability is like the least of the concerns going forward. And then, my observation in, in trying to help with this process is that it's really hard to form a friends group where we don't even know if we have a site, and we haven't applied for design funds. I think that the momentum that we would wanna be building is from getting awarded a design grant, then we all have funding to really talk about the fences and the gates and the benches and the parking and the maintenance, and then, you know, the idea is that we don't really even know the full cost of this yet. And so, the design grant designs the park and then comes up with the construction estimate. Uh, basically in that order, and if I'm correct, but then, as we embark on that process, is when we form the friends group, we form, you know, the committee or the group who's gonna be responsible for maintenance, and then we, we start to build the endowment for maintenance. It's, it just seems hard to do that now, because we could get stalled with little momentum and little interest if we don't even have the design funds in place. So, we talked a lot about it, I mean, I think if we can get to a location, work through the winter, uh, preparing for the design study and get that funding, then, then we would have true momentum.
I didn't realize that that conversation had.
Right. And you just made me feel a lot better, 'cause I feel like I'm behind on this. No, it's, we wanted to take a step back and do this, this larger discussion, 'cause we, we really did not wanna just pick a site, which we could have done, but it wouldn't have been the best process. So, all those things have come up, and I think are, um, we have, moving forward, we have a lot of models, and there are a lot of different, so I think Jeff said there's a lot of different ways to set up the structure for the management and removal of waste and all that stuff, but it's not as if East Hampton is the first in this, in this regard. So, so once we get closer, we would obviously have those really important parts of the discussion.
I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad it's on the radar and that there's been discussion.
Yep.
The other thing I'll just mention too, is, is harder standards grant program for the dog parks in particular, they do extend, and it was three or five years, but they do have maintenance grants after the park has been granted. If that doesn't solve the long, long term answer, but at least for the first couple of years, they do offer grants to, you know, for, for maintenance specifically for their park grants.
I didn't know that, that's cool.
Thank you for sharing, yeah.
But it's interesting that we, we don't, like, that there's none, that we're applying for grants. There, there's no guarantee that any of this.
Right.
In, in my experience, you know, this sort of thing, it's extremely difficult to organize people of, around a thing that might happen.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, that, that's just been my experience when you say, hey, this thing is coming. It's gonna be pretty cool if it happens, so we should get organized. People are like, all right, let me know when it happens, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I just, I just felt like I was really behind. I, I think you guys are wise in your statement, so, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, on the Dog Park, November twenty-first, six thirty P M, we had a point, had a place to be determined.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and, and thank you for your presentation. Jeff Bag. You're not allowed to leave. No, if we need to have a break, that's okay.
Why do we want something?
Yeah, yes, we do. Your request for inventory.
Okay.
I thought we should have discussed. Right, that we don't need a long, but I, I, I see, I see everything I talked about. Outside of meeting, I, I thought it would, it would help, yeah, we just do that. 'Cause we did have the fleet inventory that we came up with. And, as in vehicle, vehicle fleet inventory.
I like this, 'cause it'll help with.
Uh, I remember being discussed.
It was, it was distributed. You, we can finish, yeah. But we also have. There was some pressure from.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff there we haven't got.
Then we can share it.
We just knew we were gonna do this, but we either take a recent, let's take a one-minute recent. All right, folks? Excuse me? Folks?
It's what we did behind the belt.
We have to continue the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if you could take.
Thanks for coming.
Conversation.
Really?
Of course, you waited so long.
Can I ask one question that has nothing to do with this?
Um.
I just wondered where the flood is going from the dredging. You have no idea?
That's a subject that we can ask.
Ask about. All right. So, I'm gonna send them.
So, in the absence of a re, gentlemen?
I'm sorry, I just, we've got another thing.
We have, we have another item on the agenda. If, if you need to continue something, I'd ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, we had on our list, city, city inventory of property and vehicle property and, and real estate property. And I know I had sent out an email in mid, midsummer, close to the summer, and asked for further delineation as to the uses of all the property. We had a three, a multi-page list of properties that were identified, but not, it wasn't clear what the uses were that are currently being, to which the land is being put. Uh, and I had hoped that we would be able to, at least, this is water department well. This is a, a, uh, all the uses, this is an unused parcel, uh, as it currently stands, a former Boy Scout camp. And I'd like, I think if, if we're to give, finish up the inventory during our terms here this year, it would be nice to be able to do that. Is that something that?
Can you slide that list over for a second?
Yeah.
I think, uh.
I, I, the use code that the assessors have.
Yeah.
Is not in a, in a, it's not gonna help anybody. But you can see by the values associated, like, this is a school department property, this is a, a building on site. And maybe, maybe you'd like to kick it back to us to sit down and plow through it, but, um.
I mean, I'm in no particular rush. I continue to feel that this is something that's important to the city in terms of opportunities for reuse, sale, development. I think that the initial intent to, uh, was, well, we, we've only met about this once, right? So.
Well, yeah, there's nothing.
I mean, I, you know, if you wanted my input, I think with, with the absence of going through a whole list, I think we potentially could identify larger parcels over a certain size and throw out ones under a certain size in terms of, um, what we're doing. Um, I think it's an ongoing discussion, you know, with, where we're, while we're looking for new opportunities for housing, parks, recreation, things like that. Um, I mean, I'm in no particular rush to move it off the agenda per se. I mean, I'm in no particular rush to move it off the agenda per se. I'd actually would like to give it its due diligence.
Been on it for a while.
Well, we've met about it once, so I don't, so-
I'm happy to meet it to schedule another time if we'd like to discuss this. I think we need an extra one. Aside from the dog park.
I, I thought that, at some point, I apologize, I did, did not know that you wanted to, I didn't know if you were expecting me to be prepared for this meeting.
Oh, no, 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 I wasn't expecting you to be prepared for this meeting, but I did send out a request, can we identify the uses to which this land is being put? I think that inventory would be useful to the public to have also if the city knows, okay, there's ten acres over here and five acres over there. And we don't have a current use for it, and maybe it's worth keeping or maybe it's worth considering something.
It's just, I think that it's, you're gonna find that it's more complicated than it sounds. I think what I recall was that we did do some calling of this. I just cannot for the life of me totally lodge it in my, where I, how, what we did. But we looked at, I recall looking at having the assessor remove anything under ten thousand dollars. So we removed anything under ten. And then I think what we did was we then carved off or created a list that was just vacant. So we have, you know, like, Whiteford High School's on here. And I, I think what we did to start the discussion of this exercise was probably no more than ten thousand dollars success value. And I think we might have even bumped it up like to a certain acreage size. So I, I can, at a quick glance, I can see in here, there's a lot of really small parcels that are needed, protected open space associated with subdivision, so.
Well, maybe if you could identify those on the list, that would be helpful to us. For example, the, the mayor talked to me about a, another issue today that just happens to come up. She says, oh, JP, this, we have this parcel over here and somebody's parking it. And we, it's city owned property, you think, and I looked at the list, yep, sure enough, it's city owned property. I'm not gonna get into specifics, but it's a small parcel, it's not valued, it's valued under ten thousand. Maybe we shouldn't own it anymore for whatever reason. And the person who's parking on it might be interested in buying it if we, if we, if we put it out there. So there may be, there may be little pieces that just aren't doing anybody any good.
That's true, that's true. I mean, I think that to determine that it's just a small parcel that is of no use and maybe we should sell it, I think that there's, there's, and you probably, right, so you'd have to do a title search, you'd have to research that there's no restriction.
There's no restrictions, it's not serving another purpose.
So I definitely cannot volunteer to be involved in that.
Right.
What I would ask, because I, I am a little embarrassed that if you had made this request in July and just did today is, there, there's, the assessor is gonna be most well-equipped to be able to call this list in certain ways. Whereas I, for all my skills, going through the GIS system and, and spreadsheets are not my, they're not my strong suit.
Do you have a list of properties that have conservation restrictions?
You would, you would think?
You would think the planning department would.
We do not, and so that's where I-
And that would be very helpful. Is maybe there's somebody in the student capacity that has a project that could assist us in that, and it may not be the-
If you've ever had a student assist you with a project, it's fifty percent handholding, twenty-five percent product and twenty-five percent nothing. So I, again, I would just encourage a conversation with the assessor to see if, I mean, directly to point out it-
I've had, I've had one.
Okay.
Not, not everybody jumps on board this. Since we, we do run a very tight ship in East Hampton and there is, we are short-staffed.
I may have a hard time getting this, the traction as well, so I'm a little gun-shy, which you don't hear me say usually.
Could you be considering conservation restrictions? Because those aren't, those are items that don't readily present themselves. And I don't think they're easily researched. I'm happy to do a search and register your deeds.
Well, I think that's where we have to go, yeah.
All right, so maybe-
It's a good eye-opener about how our data that we have may not, you know, we may have a giant data project in the city that kind of really aligns stuff with, with people. I think it's a reasonable expectation that you have, except I don't know, I personally don't have the skill set to dive into that.
Thank you for staying.
But the assessor, but the assessor might-
The assessor might.
But not necessarily.
Well, I mean, it's a place to start. And I think it needs to be, you know, followed.
I mean, I think one of the best things that you come out of this is vacant or approved. And I'm pretty sure we did that to generate the initial list for dog park. That's my recollection. But to really drill down is an exercise that I, I don't know who's best to do.
Very good, thank you. Anything else?
I don't know, motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, second. All in favor?
Aye.
This concludes.